So I'm sending out an appeal here to get help with this nature fest planning. We would like to have the biggest one ever. That's our goal. I know we're running a little bit behind, but we put together this business expo this year kinda under the same way. We were running a little bit behind and we pulled it together and had one of the best ones ever. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your effort, sir. Next item on the agenda is awards and recognitions.
There are no staff awards or recognitions tonight, Mayor.
Any from the board?
No.
I'd like to recognize this evening that we have special guests. Our special guest is Mr. Wolfgang Roder from the State of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, and Mr. Jeremiah Pyram with the Williamson County Economic Development. They have just a short word to share with us about the importance of collaboration and regional economic development. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for asking us here and good to see you all again. We see each other every quarter or so. So I just wanted to go over a few things and stress the importance of some of the things that the mayor has said when it comes to regionalism, planning and zoning. So ECD, just in case you all are not aware of our office, we cover the county, Williamson County, and the six cities incorporated in that county. And our focus is to grow jobs and help the community by whatever terms they need. So I know that we have helped broker some meetings with the TBA in terms of retail and the state. We all partner together to help the communities around us. So with that, the growth that's gonna come in this county is staggering. We're at 193,000 folks right now in the county. By 2040, it's gonna be 536,000, which is the size of Nashville. So growth is coming here. It's not gonna be stopped. If you look at jobs, we're at about 120,000 jobs right now. About 2040, there will be about 300,000 jobs. So the jobs are gonna keep pace with the growth of the people. Now, something the mayor said recently was there are, even though that Williamson County has seen high growth in the incorporated areas, the cities, we saw 40, 49% growth in the last 10 years in terms of jobs while the nation saw negative 2%. With that growth, though, there has been negative growth in the unincorporated areas. Why I bring that up? I was getting my physical in Brentwood recently, and the girl that was helping me lived in Fairview, and she said that she was not for growth. She did not like some of the things going on, which I understand that, you know, not everybody wants growth. They move out to get away from the growth. And I think that goes to how you wanna plan and how you want to see the future of Fairview. I think it's okay to preserve some of the beautiful places. Like, I came in '96 today, and I've never come that way. I've always come back roads from Franklin. And it was really pretty. I mean, the streetscaping and just nature coming from 40 down to 100. I love the country. I grew up in East Tennessee. I have a passion for it. But if you do want to help your residents by offering retail, I know something you mentioned was daytime population, that it's important to get your daytime population up, which translates into jobs. You don't have to see growth across the whole city of Fairview, but it's important to plan now and so that you get it the right, the way that you want it to be for the future. Because if you don't plan now, you're gonna wake up one day and it may not, you're gonna have random places next to a house, next to industrial, and, you know, it's part of a beautiful county. I just wanna help where our office wants to help where we can. Like a Home Depot, I know that you all mentioned that before. It comes down to the daytime population. So the planning is very important, and we're here to help. I know that we've talked about that. A couple of people that are very important, Bob Martin, who used to do planning for the city of Franklin, who took it from the eyesore that Franklin used to be to the beautiful streetscaping that Franklin is today. Clay Banks, or I'm sorry, Clay Walker, who was president of the Gallatin Economic Development Corporation for seven years. I know that he has offered up services and is interested in helping, help plan. I think that that'd be a great partnership with Clay and more. We can help wherever you want. We're here whenever you call. As far as planning, again, Thompson Station has recently come out with this marketing plan. I'll leave this with you all, but it lays out the demographics and just an overview of the plan of the city and then sites, you know, when we, so that takes us to the next thing, opportunities. When we get opportunities then from the state and from the national chamber, and cut me off, how much time am I, I mean, I'll just, a couple minutes. When we get opportunities from the state, they need it that fast. And I just can't stress the importance of having that zoning in place and having the material together, like what is to the property, the water, the electricity, all of the important details of that property. Since January, the projects that have come across my desk that I have not been able to submit amount to 4,300 jobs, 277 million in capital investment, and that's about 253 acres of everything relating to heavy industrial, manufacturing, suppliers and R&amp;D. And the last one was a R&amp;D manufacturing facility that had 600 jobs with an average salary of $145,000. But we just don't have a lot of property to give them right now in Williamson County. And we'd love to promote Fairview, I know, along the interstate or 840. So when you look at those numbers, it's just, it's there, and we don't have anywhere to send these companies. So I just would love to help Fairview get there with their planning and zoning and in a way that you all want to and to make your citizens happy as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wolfgang. I've talked enough, but you all know me. Feel free to call our office. We're here to support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and interest in Fairview. Welcome, Mr. Wolfgang.
Thank you very much.
Business Development Consultant with the State of Tennessee. Welcome to Fairview.
Thank you. And I can only say, I've been working with Jeremiah for about three months since I joined the department. You've got a great resource at hand, plus if you take his resources and mine, you have a winning team on your hands. I wanna add a little, little bit of a comment to site selection, how site selection works today. Back in the olden days, up to about 10 years ago, if a company decided they wanted to move to a different place, they wanted to move from Europe, or they wanted to move out of the colder north and wanted to move south, it was usually a top management team or sometimes even the owner who spent a whole lot of time and a whole lot of money looking at sites. Today, what happens if a company makes a decision to move, they hire a site consultant who within a week or two collects data of 100, 150 sites in Tennessee, Alabama, in the southeast without knowing any site. And as Jeremiah said, they file a request with us, with the state, with the chamber, if you don't respond within five days, you're off the roster already. Within, within the next three weeks, they put together a proposal to their contractors, and it usually handles four, five, six sites. And it happens very frequently that you have the final decision makers at a company come in in one day and visit five sites. And what they need to know, and a halfway good answer is better than no answer is at all. How are you located in terms of logistics? How close are you to an airport? How close are to your functioning interstate system? How good is your workforce, your current workforce, your access to school, to training? How is your upcoming workforce? How is your school system? How are your tax rates? And surprisingly enough, we see that more and more happen. What do you do in terms of sustainability, in terms of environmental protection? So I can only stress the fact, when Jeremiah receives a request from us, from the chamber, from a site consultant directly, in order to get on the, get on the map, you need a good plan, you need a good presentation to get these people here. Once you get them here, you might have half a day or even less than half a day to present your city and make your city move up to the list of the last three where they might come back and visit. And we're there, and you're one of 30 cities I count, but while I'm here, you're my most favorite city. And I always like to close with a good German statement, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help you." So you have no way to find me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do appreciate your interest. We greatly appreciate your supporting Fairview, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. I appreciate everybody having, having the patience, and the information was well received. Public announcements? The approval of the amendments from the May 16, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting as presented. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. First and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, business, discuss and undertake action on Board of Adjustment and Appeals. One opening for a contractor. Terms expires June 19, 2013. City Manager Hyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have on this is, when we went back and reviewed, we have James Biata Jr. is on there now, so the opening that we actually have is for an architect, and we are trying to find one and soliciting for an architect to fill that final spot.
So there'd be no action at this time?
Correct.
Thank you. Item 7B is discuss and undertake action on appointments of Board of Commissioners. We have the Industrial Development Board, one opening, and the Tree Commission, one opening. Were there any additional applications? I know you emailed one today I wasn't able to receive. Other than Ms. Elliott and Mr. Hall, do we have other applications sitting that are requesting?
Just Debbie Ray.
And she submitted for?
The Tree Commission.
Is anyone here of the applications? What are the wishes of the board?
Defer. Nope, they're not here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item 7C, discuss and undertake action on city of Fairview project. City Manager Hyatt.
Thank you. Kevin's got his spreadsheet. He's gonna come and address those.
Thank you. Welcome, Kevin.
Y'all have an updated revised project spreadsheet? There's a few new projects on there this week and a few new updates. We'll start with the City Center Greenway. We're still waiting on the NEPA information and documents. Still pushing hard to get them involved and engaged. So no new status there. Booley Lake Road project, we are 90% done with the electrical work, 100% done with the communications work. Should be pulling the polls either tomorrow or Monday. Sidewalk, if I don't know, some of y'all have seen the new sidewalk that's in from the Nature Center out to the fire station. That's 100%. What we have left to do is basically the curb and gutter and the paving and the sidewalk from Fairview Boulevard into the park. And I'm hoping that will wrap up in the next two weeks. Lake Van Trail, Keith Paisley and I took a, took a drive out through Loblawli Loop, came up with a distance about 2,800 feet using the unit costs from the original project. We're looking at $222,000 to do an ADA accessible trail. By the looks of Loblawli Loop, it looks we could probably maintain that 5% required by ADA, but we could probably look at some different materials other than asphalt, maybe some permaeval concrete, maybe dress it up a little bit. But right now, it's still a significant cost just for the ADA trail.
Could you please share with me what the original cost around the lake was that you presented a couple weeks ago, sir?
It was just in materials. It was roughly $120,000 without any labor. I'll have to go back and, I don't have that number in front of me this evening, but I can email that to you after the meeting.
And anticipation for labor was staff labor?
It was gonna be staff labor.
Thank you.
Now, we would still have to hire, have a contractor come in and do the asphalt work from the parking lot over the dam, and I believe there's some additional asphalt to shelter too. So there would be additional costs there as well. That's not something that city staff could do, the asphalt work. Ours was strictly the boardwalks. So, any questions? Booley Park Forestry, that's still in the project status, the bid phase.
What, when did it go to bid and what's the status?
It was about two weeks ago. I don't have in front of me the exact date, but I think the opening is next Friday or the next Monday or seven.
Monday is the first. Yes, sir.
Any questions on that? The next project we have is Triangle School. Don has an update on the Triangle School for that.
I've got an email back from Alan Lowe, an architect that we were engaged with. He has let me know that they will not be able to do the project at a flat fixed fee, and his option was to notify us when we were approaching milestones of 5,000, 10,000, 15,000, or 20,000. So I need some direction on what, what y'all want us to do. Go back and look for someone else to do the project? Or move forward with, with Mr. Lowe?
Comments from the board?
Well, was there any reasoning that's just not his practice, or was there something he couldn't really estimate, estimate the cost, or?
I think this was probably his polite way of saying he don't wanna do the project.
And his scope of work is what?
Well, his, the scope of work that we asked him to do was to prepare mechanical, electrical, plumbing and insulation plans.
Do you have someone who has done that and has submitted that to the planning and zoning of the city of Fairview, of names that you can inquire? Such as kinda people that the city of Fairview has done business with in the past and see if it's something they would be willing to help us and work with us on?
I can, I can get with other architectural firms that we, that have presented plans to us for other projects and see.
Okay. City Manager mentioned a moment ago that they're looking for an architect to work and serve on the Board of Adjustments Appeals. At that point, that might tie in together. That's my comment on that. Any other comments or directions?
We could probably use some help from Dr. Rice.
As an architect?
Not him himself, but to bring us, bring us some names, or people that he's, I've talked about that before.
Okay.
All right. Next light item is the Farmers Market, and that was sent back to the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken. Give an update for that, Don, with the pod.
Well, one thing I did, Saturday I talked to Mrs. Jones.
Okay.
And there was another young lady out there selling some, some vegetables, and they both were ecstatic about the possibility of moving across the street. They, they plan on continuing.
Excellent.
Somewhere. And when we talked, spoke about, I said, "It might not be right away." I mean, they really almost got overexcited. I said, "It might not be, you know, next week or the next week. It might be next spring, but, but we needed to know if you were gonna continue before we, we made an investment." And they were very excited about it.
Okay. That was definitely a question, as I mentioned before.
Correct.
The community garden, as it's being worked on with the school, I believe this will see its new face soon. Okay? Thank you.
Um, anybody contact the county about possible that being a temporary location?
I have not personally, but I know Dr. Ori wants to come in and speak to y'all probably sometime in August, probably the first or second meeting about a partnership with the four, not 4H, but the gardening, the group down there that's the landscape class or something and some things of that nature. So I'm, I'm not sure what her angle is, but that's kinda the discussion she's had with me as far as wanting to come and start getting involved, so we would probably work through her to do that at that time.
And that would be for the Farmers Market?
I think a combination of the Farmers Market, growing some trees for the city and just a big collaboration between us and the school system.
Was your question directed to the medical center as we discussed last meeting?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the last meeting conversation. So I just wondered if anybody had contacted the Williamson County about the medical, is a temporary site?
The property next to it, that?
The medical.
The area that's on the school property or behind it there? Yeah. I have not.
Well, somebody had mentioned, I guess, Commissioner Bessel.
They've talked about using the parking lot at Franklin.
I have not spoken to anybody at Franklin, but that's not a hard thing to do tomorrow. I'll, I'll follow up on that. Unless one of y'all have. I have not.
Okay.
The next light item we have is Evergreen Park. I'm not sure if y'all been out there. I got it at 90%. We're probably closer to 95 after today. The guys spent the entire day out there seeding and straw on the hill. And once we get to another light item down further on the list, we can expand on kinda what the goals are for the park going forward. So, but we're getting close to spending up the $5,500 and dressing up that area down there and turning it into a real nice usable park.
Thank you.
The five-year strategic plan for Booley Park?
Keith and I and Jenny are reviewing that now and gonna set up a series of meetings with each other and in communication with the park board to discuss some options as we move forward. But we are reviewing it and have almost completed our review.
Highway 96 Roadscapes project, it's still in the NEPA phase. There's no update on that. Pushing hard for these people to try to get them out of the NEPA. Just, it's a long process to go through. Moving on to the federal and state local projects, the Safe Routes to School project, some good news. We did get released on the NEPA, and now we're currently in the process for the request for qualifications for design. So hopefully in the next couple weeks, we will have an answer on who we're gonna select for the Safe Routes to School project. So that's a good step forward. The MPO Act of Transportation, we're still in the NEPA phase, and the Surface Transportation's still in the NEPA phase. So we're still waiting on that phase to be complete so we can get to design and select a designer after the RFQ. Welcome signs, I have not heard anything back from Mr. Biata or Ms. Biata. We're still waiting on the agreement for the location. I'll follow up with him early next week and see if we can get an agreement in place. But we do have, the only thing we don't have material-wise is the actual sign, the actual constructed sign. We have all the block and the capstones and everything else and the rebar, so it shouldn't take very long once we get the approval. City paving, I've been working with the city attorney on getting a bid put together. We've exchanged some emails, and I'll have to have some more clarification on how we're gonna do that for the King Road portion. So hopefully early next week, we should have that release for bid. And that usually runs 20-plus days, 22 days. Any questions thus far? City transportation plan, anything new, Don, I know?
No, we're still working with the city engineer. Hopefully we'll have something either by next month or by August to bring to the board. We do have the city center plan that I believe everyone has agreed on was a good plan that we need to move forward with, that will be incorporated into that transportation plan as well. So we already have that section of it done, but the other connector roads or bypass roads we're still working on.
And then we have the city center overlay, which is still kinda the same. I think I said I was gonna combine those last time. I did not, sorry. City survey?
What I've done, I sent you an email last week about a student that's recruited herself. She's a junior at Austin Peay. She's gonna come to us for nothing, gonna work as an intern, and that's one of the projects I'm gonna give her to start doing and formulating and coming up with a good plan to get that going. So, as well as some other projects, but the survey will be part of that.
I'd like to also comment, the Thompson Station that was left with you, if her and Don worked together, I'd say that could be put together, and that would be grand. Ms. Van is sharp, very sharp girl.
Next project we have is the Windstream City Networking. That's sitting at 55%. We actually had a little hiccup in the Metro E getting it turned on and serviced, and then there was some site-specific issues at the fire station and the Nature Center that we're reworking. So they're supposed to be back, back out here the 27th to start finishing up the pre-install and the final install and hoping to go live by the end of the month. We just had some.
By June?
Yes. No, July 1.
The end of June or the end of July?
End of June.
Okay.
They, right now, they'll be back onsite the 27th.
Okay.
And then the last item that I alluded to earlier was the Veterans Memorial Park. City Manager Hyatt and I have been working on getting some quotes and some stuff, and I'll let him elaborate further on that.
Well, we did go out and we just went online and got some quotes on some flag poles, and we were looking at the possibility of having, we haven't got a design yet, it's just something Kevin and I have kinda put on paper. Three flag poles that had the American flag, the state flag, and the POW/MIA flag. We talked, gonna talk with the, that, that range of prices, anywhere from $1,000 to $2,500 for those flag poles, depending on what we decided to go with or how we wanted to move forward there. The other thing would be they had to be lit 24 hours a day. Talking to Middle Tennessee Electric about putting a spotlight on that piece of property that would help, and it would be cheaper than us buying all the materials and putting them up. It's gonna be like $7.50 a month versus us spending at capital outlay upfront, so it's a minimal cost there. Also, we talked about, similar to our signs, our welcome signs, getting some stones like that and creating behind three flag poles on a paved area, a wall that would have a plaque that would be put on it commemorating our veterans of all of our wars. And fencing was about $550 for the materials, was that right?
To continue the same.
To continue the same style fence all the way.
Down past the Water Authority and down to the stop sign.
Just gotten a couple tweaks, and we'll be able to come back to you with some specific ideas and a design so you can see what we're talking about as we get a little closer.
But I do have an update on the light itself.
Okay.
The light the way we need it. They're also running the necessary conductors for that light, so at any point in time, if we ever wanna have a meter set and run independent lights to light anything else, we, we have the capability of having a meter and setting something up.
Okay. The Evergreen Park budget was 5,500, and you had mentioned you had come close to spending that in the rehab.
Yes.
What, as far as the continuance of the beautification or ornamentals and such, where's that money coming from?
We were gonna try to look at, hopefully people would donate some things like that. They could call to the American Legion, BFW, those type of groups to see what interest they might have. Also, with just our standard budget that we'd have with parks or maintenance of community services budget, just working out within our budget constraints. So we're trying to get it as, as low as we can.
Great. Well, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next item, new business, 8A, discuss and undertake action on the purchase or lease of new police cars. Chief Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all should have a copy of the amounts on the 10 vehicles and the eight vehicles. The 10 vehicles, the payment would be yearly, $143,012. For the three years would be $429,036. For eight vehicles would be $114 a year. For three years would be $343. To lease, it would be, it's $6,393 per car, plus the interest rate to lease is 6%. To purchase is 2.2. And to lease, I would have to do it this year. To purchase, I have 360 days to make my first payment.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
On the lease situation, at the end of the three-year lease, what's the status of the vehicles?
We can purchase them for a dollar.
For a dollar? Is the, you anticipate that the equipment would be transportable? Like, if we were under the lease, we have to buy this equipment. Will it, is, will it be obsolete?
That's the problem we're having right now. When we purchase new vehicles, I'm having to purchase new equipment for some of the vehicles 'cause it's so old, it's wore out. That's the reason. If we, if we purchased leased 10 vehicles, I have to spend $230,000 just for equipment for them 10 vehicles. But in the other, we still have to buy the equipment for the vehicles we purchase, but it's all in one note.
So included in the annual payment of $143 on the 10 units is equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, at least I think I know what your answer is.
So included in the annual payment of one forty-three on the ten units is equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
I know, at least I think I know what your answer will be to this question, but I need a, do you need ten or would eight do?
I need twelve, to be honest. We're going to have to buy more because these vehicles, the mileage, what you see on the paper on the mileage, you can double it, sometimes triple it. Where they're running up and down the road and when they work a wreck, they're sitting there for an hour, it's running. The blue lights are on. When they're sitting in there running radar, the unit is running. So the motor has hours on it. Some of the new vehicles have a hour gauge on them and a lot of them don't.
So do you have any data as to what, if you need twelve, what the twelve would be?
What kind of vehicles?
No, what, how much the price?
That was, I handed that out the first time. It would be a hundred and seventy-two dollars, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars a year. Total over three years would be five hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eight.
And then in three years, we would need to buy twelve more?
No. Did I mess up on the five? I thought it was on the three. That's what I said, one seventy-two. We're not going five years, we're going three.
That's more expensive for the, for twelve than buying them ten or eight at a time. That costs us over forty-three thousand a vehicle over three years. We're both, the other two are forty-two million. How is that? Is that the same company?
It is the same company and I've taken them off two different papers because this is the one we just called about when I was asking, asked to get the ten and the eight.
I believe Commissioner Sutton had a question and I'm just going to bring it back up and correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't his question an evaluation of the maintenance cost on the current units?
Yes, we spend about forty-five percent of the total maintenance budget on the police department. And the mechanic spends between seventy-five and eighty percent of his time on police vehicles.
Chief, I'm not sure you understood my question right, or maybe I didn't say it right. We had, if we buy, if we bought twelve today, in three years, we're not going to replace those twelve, but we will have to buy twelve more to cover the other half of the fleet, right?
Well, we've got some new ones that we just bought last year, so we wouldn't have to replace them. The Tahos that we've got, we bought four, plus I just bought a, we bought a traffic car out of the traffic fund. So there's five cars we wouldn't have to replace.
Okay. I'm just trying to get an idea of, of how, how we, you know, how many years does it take us to totally replace?
I'd like to get them at least replaced with every, every five years. They're really worn out.
Across the board.
Every five years. Except for administrative vehicles. They can go longer.
These ten are cars or Tahos?
They're Ford, they're cars, but they're all-wheel drive. They're Ford SUVs.
Six cylinders.
Six cylinders. And Randy had priced the oil filters and stuff like that, which is cheaper, cheaper than what we're doing now to change out. He had called the manufacturer and the tires are even cheaper and the brakes are even cheaper on these Fords.
Again, I just, I'm about the same where I was in the budget talk. And, you know, I know you see a need and this is something you probably haven't been doing and you've just kind of boom, it's hit you in the face. You know, we've got to, you know, start implementing this and the care of the vehicles and, but I still have a hard problem and I know a lot of y'all are in discussion, we're leaning towards, well, we don't have to pay now. But that kind of bothers me in the fact of when we just had budget meetings and we're like, make cuts, do this, and no one could seem to cut anything. And if we're betting on Walmart, it's still not built. I know it's coming. We've all had that conversation. But, you know, I just think twelve, ten, that's a huge bite on vehicles. I know you need a plan. I know something needs to be implemented. I know we have to protect the safety of our officers. So I say this in all the kindness in my heart, but I have a hard time, you know, with a budget of boom, we're going to get twelve cars or ten or eight. And especially, you know, I don't have the list in front of me. I looked, but, you know, still a lot of the cars don't seem high mileage. You know, when I look at them, they seem purely low and they all are in better mileage than my own personal car. So it's kind of hard for me to understand, boom, here we go, eight, twelve cars. You know, I'd like to see something, well, I mean honestly, any, since we sat down and, you know, there was no money to be cut. But I know we got to take care of the people. I'd like to see something, a plan, more, a gradual one. This year we get five, next year we get, you know, five more, you know, and stagger it where we're not getting hit. I know the interest rate is part of the factor. I know y'all had mentioned before, but, and we don't know what the interest rate will be. But you're turning around and what's the life, five years, you said, of a car, vehicle?
About five, yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm in agreeance with you as far as a plan of gradually staggering something could be a more, a more palatable way to go about where we sit right now in budget. And I think you had worked up a maintenance roster of all of the equipment, all of the age of the equipment, all of the miles on the equipment. I believe we talked about that within the last couple of months. And I believe looking at that and saying, this is where we have a desperate need, this is where it would be good to be more safe or the maintenance on this is out of line. So I agree with what she's saying and perspective of us being able to work gradually. At this point, as of tonight, we're in the middle of budget and trying to finalize the budget and it's not necessarily excessive money left over to be able to willingly give a request. So I'm, I'm not, you know, my, my motion would be that we continue to discuss it and defer it to us finishing up budget to see what we can do for a more gradual plan. Is a motion on the floor?
Second.
Discussion.
If we replaced eight or ten of them now, how long would you want to wait before we replace the other? They will work together. If we replace the eight of them now, three years from now, would you have to have, or would you have to have them sooner than the three?
I'd have to have them sooner than the three. The city has not purchased a police vehicle in ten years. In ten years.
But we have purchased vehicles.
Yes.
And I understand your statement of the city versus the drug fund. I just wanted-
How much funds in the drug fund?
Maybe a hundred, not much.
I didn't want to leave it that we haven't bought a police car in ten years. That's not a big fact.
But, and, and I understand getting on a rotation and, but you got to start. So if, if the board would give me eight cars this year, we would see what we'd have to have next year. And it's only when they start falling apart. And all my cars are in the shop. You know, they come in, we send them to the shop. And Randy's great. He puts them back together and they're back on the road in a couple of days. So I, you know, I take nothing away from him. And, but they break down and they break, they've broken down on calls. And just luckily, we've had other officers to take the calls.
I have a question. How many patrol officers do you have currently, right now, that do regular patrol?
Twenty, we what? Fifteen? No, our patrol. Regular patrol.
Patrol. So if we bought eight, we're basically giving your patrolmen, you know, half of them new cars.
Yes.
You bought four last year.
Yes, five last year.
Five last year. Of course, they didn't all go to patrolmen. How many were patrolmen for the one?
Three.
Three? So we're looking at, if you bought eight and then you have three, you know, eleven. So I don't know, it just seems kind of drastic to me. I mean, I understand. And I, let me tell you, I want to go on record saying, you come in budget, y'all work hard. I mean, you do, I know you wouldn't come if you don't need these. I know that, you know, potential Walmart's coming. It's a good time to start this. You know, if you, this is truly what you need done. I just don't think the timing's right. I really don't. When we're sitting in meetings and we can't find any more money.
But it's not for this year. I mean, and it's not, this rate, it's not for this year's budget. It's for the next year's budget.
I know. But we're, it's still a debt that's going to go against the city and it may not cost us this year, but we got to pay sometime. And I, you know, and when I speak, I understand the, the interest rates. And I understand that we don't know, you know, tomorrow. But then also, you know, as we talked before, we don't know Walmart's coming until we walk in, you know, the door. I know people don't like to hear that, but it's true. We don't know they're coming. They could stop tomorrow. So I just really feel like that, you know, it goes back to that whole spending process of let's not spend the money yet. And as we get the money, you know, let's put you first on the list, you know, to look at. And then let's have a plan, you know? Those are all things that me personally, and I can't speak for the board, obviously, but those are things that, you know, you can live with knowing, okay, we're going, might have this potential extra money, let's spend it. You know what? We'll put, you know, Chief Harris on the top of the list because we know the police department, the city doesn't buy new cars on a regular basis, even though the drug fund has helped funded them. But that would be something I could live with. And then a plan, you know, I just, to sit here and say, half of my patrol officers need brand-new cars, I don't know if I'm there. Other discussion?
I've, go ahead.
What if we use the drug fund money to pay for the first year of it and approved it now?
There wouldn't be enough.
A year from now, you don't think there would be enough?
Possibly, maybe, but no, I don't know. Oh, that's right. You can't do payments with drug fund money. I'm sorry. You can only pay cash, drug fund money.
Well, I'm sure they would sell us three or four of them or whatever it came up to be to, and we only had to finance the rest.
Yeah.
Then that makes it less cost to the city with no financing. And every news channel yesterday was interest rates are about to go up. So it's going to cost us more money if we wait.
Well, that was a comment I was going to make. If you can pay attention to the news, the interest rates fixing to go, fixing to go up across the board, everything from, from financing vehicles to home mortgages, everything based upon that. The other thing, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief or Captain Sutton, the, we're down two or three officers. We've lost two or three that we haven't replaced yet. We're in the process of replacing. So saying we only have fifteen, we're probably, more realistically, at full capacity, we've got like eighteen patrol officers. Is that right? Or is the fifteen?
Well, we have fifteen patrol officers, but we also have traffic units. We have two of them. And we have a drug unit, so that's another unit. And you have three detectives. And then Captain Sutton and myself.
And it takes eight months to get one of these delivered, right?
I'm not sure what the delivery date was. It's changed once.
The last, the last number we got were about ninety days. It's the same, same date.
So it could be in the parking lot in ninety days.
That was the last number we got. That was a month.
I, you know, I still stand for them. I mean, I understand what they're saying. And I still stand that, you know, let y'all be the first to sign up, you know? You know, the interest rate probably is going to go. We see it all over the news. It's probably going to happen, but it's still spending money we don't have. And when it comes down to it, is, you know, let's, yeah, anyway, if Walmart doesn't come, where's the money going to come from? Reserves, you know? We have a three-year commitment that we have to pay. It just, I don't know. I just, that's not how I do business. So I don't know. I don't want the city to either.
Other discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor that we authorized Chief to order six vehicles now and that then, and to submit a, before the delivery of those vehicles, submit a long-range plan back to us for any future vehicle. But I, I've seen that list and we've got at least six vehicles that are not roadworthy, that I think are dangerous to be out on the highway for our police officers to be using. And I just, I just, I know Randy does a great job. It's not, it's not anything against Randy. It's not anything against the vehicles. Vehicles just wore out. And I think six is somewhat, it's low, it's half of what the chief says he really needs, but it does allow us to have some movement. But then I agree with Commissioner Carroll and the mayor that we don't need to be buying anymore after that until we get a long-range plan that we can all buy into. But I think we need six based upon what I remember that list.
I'll second it with a question. Is the interest rate going to change since we're taking it down to six units or will it still be two point two?
The interest rate will be the same except he only give us, what was it, fourteen days? They're only good for fourteen days when he gives us a price on the-
Well, how would y'all know what six units would be if y'all just, you just asked that tonight?
How much are they a piece, please?
Were they, I need a calculator.
You did something of forty-two or forty-three thousand. I heard that a moment ago.
Approximately forty-three thousand dollars are fully equipped, road-ready.
But that was with interest included.
Right.
Now, I can order them. I have three hundred and sixty days. I don't have to start paying until the money gets here.
How much if you bought one cash, fully equipped?
It would be in the next year.
Yeah, I'd almost rather do that. Just buy as many as we can out of the drug fund money. Just pay cash for them and then-
Or sixty if they-
I don't have, I'm using the drug fund money to buy as many as we can buy.
That's, that was what was going to be my motion. I was going to do that by as many as we can cash.
I just don't know how, how much is in the drug fund. How many that I buy?
A hundred. Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Hundred thousand divided by forty-one, how much would that get us?
You can get two and a half cars.
Two and a half?
Buy two cars.
Well, I can't empty out my drug fund. I could buy two, but I wouldn't, wouldn't want to empty my drug fund.
You got big plans for it?
Well, that's what we use to purchase stuff.
And this would be good stuff, two cars.
Well, I have to use it to purchase other stuff that we prosecute for.
I want to amend your motion that two cars be purchased out of the drug fund as requested, fully equipped.
That, and that would be for this year.
That's my motion.
For this year's budget.
That would be for immediate, right? Within this fourteen days. Second.
Discussion.
Is that, are you comfortable doing two cars out of your drug fund?
Is that, are you comfortable doing two cars out of your drug fund this year?
Yes.
The, what about, Crystal's shaking her head.
Well, can we, can you amend it to what I can afford, either one or two? I still got salaries coming out of that, I got a salary coming out of that.
So, starting next budget year, there's no salary coming out of that?
And that's already included in the presented budget for, just under personnel? Yes? Well, if you sold all these cars that are, I mean, because there's a lot of cars out there, all of them, how many of them are being used right now?
We have three, three spare cars that are not used daily. I know one of those three is probably in operational patrol, it doesn't have blocks in the panel, the cluster doesn't work, many of them gauges. So, really, we have two vehicles that we use for backup.
And that's probably necessary to have one, at least one, and two's probably nice.
The first week of June, we had seven cars in that, in that timeframe that needed extreme maintenance work, emergency maintenance work. They totaled well over a thousand dollars in money. But that's the problem we're kind of running into, is the agency fleet that we have, costs more to keep on the road. If you look at the proposal for the next three, five years, it might cost what we're spending now, compared to what we would spend for the new fleet. State guidelines for emergency vehicles, the cutoff's eighty-five thousand a mile. At eighty-five thousand miles, state full, their emergency vehicles off the road. We've got fourteen cars that exceed that right now. Twelve to fourteen, two, you know, I think eight of them are well at a hundred and forty thousand miles. The other four or five are at least a hundred thousand, and there's a couple that are close to a hundred thousand.
Larry, could that prove to be a liability to the city?
If you're talking about involved in an accident, first thing, one of the first things you're going to want to see is the maintenance records of the vehicles. And while it still would be under the tort claims liability act, it's, yes, you could introduce that as, as a potential cause. Especially if you get an expert to look at the vehicle and you know what fate, and says this was a result of excessive wear. It would, it would be an issue. How much of an issue depends on how good the witness is.
You know, one of the things I keep thinking, we have our own in-house maintenance person that we use, and I know that you can't control when a car, and if they're all the same age, like, we experienced this personally, our cars are all the same age, and they're all breaking at the same time, every month, and so I understand. But many of the cars, I know you were, you said eighty thousand was the cutoff, eighty-five mark? So, how many meet that, are under eighty-five?
From the report that I have from two months ago, when we took the miles reading, fourteen vehicles are over eighty-five thousand miles.
Okay, see, I didn't remember how many in total, or I would have subtracted.
If you put the spare vehicles in that, we have twenty-seven total vehicles, including our, our transportation van, and the three spare vehicles, and then the manager.
Crystal, did you get a figure of the drug fund, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I show that the drug fund at the end of thirteen will be roughly sixty thousand dollars, sixty-one thousand. And for the year of twenty thirteen, we've only brought in twenty-nine thousand dollars, roughly thirty thousand, because that doesn't count, that's at the end of May. The only money that's been coming in is from stops, fees versus money stops.
Motion in the second on the floor is, the drug fund money be used to purchase a car? Or what amount can be used?
I, I just don't see how buying one vehicle changes the chief's situation at all. I mean, I, I just, I mean, if we had five hundred thousand dollars in the drug fund, and we could buy four or five vehicles, then he could limp on with that, but one vehicle is not, is not going to help his situation. And so, I, I go back to what I said, I, I think he needs the twelve he's asked for, but given what Commissioner Carroll has said, and I, I agree with her about not wanting to put too much bet on the future, I, I think six is, is what I'm comfortable with taking the risk for. But, but we've got to do something, I, I think he, Captain Sutton said seventeen of them are over eighty-five thousand miles.
Fifteen, I think he said fifteen.
And I'm looking at data that says that, that that's the right number here, that we should be doing it. So, I, I, I guess I, I don't have any problem buying a car out of the drug fund, I just, I think we need at least a half dozen cars right away, or as soon as we can get them.
I'll call for a vote on the motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Is this the, which?
Buying from the drug fund cars?
If we can afford it.
Afford out of the drug fund. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If you had a hundred, that'd be a better story, she said sixty, so at that point, if any can be bought out of that, there is permission to move forward on that.
Thank you.
We have a second motion, and I, I mean, a second amendment, and a second on the floor.
Buy six.
Purchasing six vehicles.
Under this proposed, using this proposal that they gave us, instead of buying eight, buy six.
So, is using the math of forty, we're in discussion, using the math of forty-three times six is the purchase amount that you're wanting to?
Yes, ma'am.
Commit, does anybody have a math real quick on that for me?
Forty-three times six would be two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And, and that would not be expended in thirteen, fourteen, that would be expended in fourteen, fifteen.
Correct.
So, we'd be obligating ourselves for fourteen, fifteen, for one-third of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Crystal, have you done the math to see how much six of them would be payment?
Roughly eighty-six thousand dollars.
Eighty-six, two twenty-four is what I got, I was just checking that.
Okay, just to throw out one more time. You know, what, I could live with some kind of plan, you buy four this year, four next year, four that, then all of a sudden, it equals up to the twelve, it's within your five-year, you know, range that you would need a new vehicle. Something just a little more tangible than saying, we're just going to bank, throw the bank, and hope all the money comes.
Well, what my motion was, was that we would buy six immediately, as the first year, and then that we would not buy any more.
Till we got the plan.
Until we got the plan.
But we still have to pay for six in two thousand, you know, once Walmart comes. It wouldn't come out of the two thousand fourteen budget for the two thousand fifteen.
We've, we've had, based upon.
These cars have to be purchased whether we get a Walmart or not.
Right, and, and we've had enough growth without the Walmart to cover an additional eighty-something thousand each, each time. We get, we're getting that growth in regular growth from stuff.
Well, and I believe we're going to grow, so don't get me wrong on that, but I just think we are sitting in a budget talk, and nobody could find any money, and then all of a sudden, we're going to bank on, you know, our future, and I don't know, that's.
You could buy them out of reserve right now.
I know we could, but we wouldn't, you know, how much money is that going to leave in reserve?
How much money's in reserve right now? I have absolutely no problem buying ten or eight, taking the first year's payment out of reserve, and then replenishing reserve once tax revenue starts showing up.
If that's necessary.
If it's necessary.
A year and a half from now.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The reserve's there for when we need it, and this is the time when we need it, if we don't have the money in the budget, then we pull it from reserve.
But, but again, that's fifteen to eighteen months from now.
I agree.
So, we don't know where we will be in that particular point, we, we may not even need to touch reserve.
And we might have one point three million in reserve.
So, I, I, you know, I offered six as a compromise, I would go higher, too, but I was trying to find something that we could all have a level of comfort with. That would give the chief seven, because he could buy one out of the drug fund, and then he could buy six more under this program.
Yeah, I'm just talking six months, to first, till we see Walmart in the ground, but, you know, I, I don't know.
But if we, if you were going to say whether or not it's in the ground, then you've got to go back and say, well, I don't know if people will shop there.
Well, maybe.
You don't know if they'll come and spend money there, so we might not get any money.
Maybe. I don't know. Mr. LeVorn, do you have a confirmation for that statement? Okay, do we have an estimated date? I just noticed you had a comment, I wanted to see if it was positive or negative, so that was positive, thank you. Other discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number eight B, discuss and/or take action on recommendation from the planning commission, Director LeVorn.
I had a recommendation from the planning commission at the last meeting, the rezoning application to amend the master development plan for the Fairview Historic Village. Planning commission voted unanimously to send the recommendation to approve, with a, an added note being placed on the master development plan that would state, before any permits can be issued, a site plan shall be submitted to the planning commission for a recommendation to be forwarded to the board commissioners for approval.
What are the wishes of the board?
No approval.
And this just be authorizing the city attorney to draw up the ordinance.
We have a motion, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Discussion. Now, tell me again, explain what the, it's for, again.
You always provide it with the plan, we were instructed to, the original plan, all the buildings had labels on them, farmhouse, barn, and things of that nature. Recommendation was to remove all the labels off the, off the buildings, and then one building was added to accommodate a place for a farmer's market or an amphitheater.
So, we're just approving this new plan, I just, when you made the addition, I was just making sure I was following. Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I don't know how many people have heard of the road-to-Abilene paradox, but I think that we're on the road to Abilene. And if you're not familiar with it, the story is that this family gets together, and they go to drive fifty miles to Abilene, Texas, to get some ice cream. And the ice cream shop is closed, and, and so they've wasted their whole Sunday afternoon and gas money and everything to get to the ice cream place. And on the way back, they get to talking about it, and nobody really wanted any ice cream anyway. And that's a, that's a short version of it, and I, I think that that's what we're on. I, I don't want to change the plan, I don't want to do anything. I want to have a meaningful discussion about where are we going with the History Village, and how much money, additional monies, the city is willing to invest in that. I believe it was Sunday's paper, there was an article in there about an identical effort, or as close as I've seen, even with pictures on Nolan'sville, where they redid the school in Nolan'sville. And the city of Nolan'sville was not doing that. And it, it was, it was being done by a, a group of people over there, and they were doing fundraising, and a lot of the good things like Dr. Rice and, and his group have done. But, this is, we're, we're at, I think we're on the road dabbling. And I think we keep pouring money and making little incremental changes to this thing, and, and I'm not sure that that location and that place is where we want to put any more of the taxpayers' money. Especially having just seen us vote down police cars that we need. So, I, I, I don't, I don't want to change the plan, I don't even want to take the time to ask Larry to do that, so I'm voting no.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Item number nine A, city manager, items for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, just two things, there'll be no meeting July fourth, we've canceled that. July third, fireworks, music fun out here, food out here in front of City Hall, starting somewhere around four o'clock. Fireworks should be somewhere between nine forty-five and ten.
The people all over town talk, people all over town talking about how great it was and how they can't wait, so we are looking forward to celebrate. Staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. See if I can get my PowerPoint up. It's been a challenge today. And then I get to work this little thing. There it is. Okay, I have the finances for the month of May. We should be at ninety-one point six seven percent, and we show overall revenues at seventy-nine percent. We do have quite a few that will be made, entries that will be made this month as close-out entries, where we transferred money in from other revenue, or, I'm sorry. I am looking currently at the budgeted numbers to see how close we're going to come to being in budget at the end of June. Again, we were supposed to be at ninety-one percent, and we have hit ninety-five percent, the month of May is the first time we went over budget. We have, I have a slide, if I go too fast, let me know, I'll slow down. But the next slide is the important one, I think. This one is the items that are, the major items that are over budget. The numbers that I have out to the side are the actual amount over the budget as of the end of May. And so, the property insurance, that's property, that is workers' comp insurance, and all of our property liabilities, our cars, our, our buildings. It went from one twenty-five last year to one fifty this year without being notified that it was going to raise. I have talked to them before doing a budget this year, that we're in the process of, of passing, and it's not going to raise again next year. So, I, that is one item, actually, all of these items on this list were raised in the current budget that we're passing. The telephone expense is about thirteen thousand over, and I have raised that one to match, it's roughly seventy-five thousand, I believe, is what the total number is, once Windstream comes in. The engineering fees is the only one that I did not raise, because that's the moving target, depending on what we use and what we don't. And I believe we've discussed utilizing Mr. Holsinger as a city engineer to save some of that money. Public notices are over three thousand. Medical and eye reimbursement is a new category, it's, it's not a new, it's not new to the city, it's a separated category. it's not a new, it's not new to the city. It's a separated category. It used to all be under what we paid Blue Cross Blue Shield, all of it was one. So, we couldn't see how much we were reimbursing for, this is where the city reimburses you for meeting your deductible. So, we had separated that this year so we could see just how much we were spending. So, we just guesstimated on the budget of that, wasn't sure what number we would hit. So, that's kind of a new line item, but not new to the city, if that makes sense. It was encumbered in one other line item before. Office supplies are about 5,000 over. The maintenance for motor vehicles that we've discussed earlier is 10,000 over. Gas is about 12,000 over and tires is about 2,000 over. This is at the end of May. I do know that there's been a little maintenance in June and I know that gas is about 10,000 more. We just got the bill, the Matco bill this week. And tires, I believe, we bought just a few, but only about $1,200 worth. That's a lot. I understand. I don't mean to say only like it's not that much. So, I have printed up to date. We do have one more payroll and I'm going to work with the numbers tomorrow and see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. And it will be put on the special meeting that is Wednesday night at 5:30. 5:30 is Wednesday night, 5:30 is our next special meeting. But if, if there is amendments to be made, I will make sure it's emailed to you tomorrow afternoon before I go home.
So, the gas is going to be somewhat 24,000 over budget?
Yes. And that, that is a line item also that we increased. It was 110, the current year that we're in and the projected year is 140, I believe. I increased all of these items except for engineering to reach the amount. I don't think I increased eye reimbursement 40,000. I think that was only 10,000. So, that will be one we'll have to watch next year, medical and eye reimbursement. But the rest of these were increased enough to, to hit that, hit what we're going to spend this year. But we did keep maintenance of motor vehicles as Kevin had stated, or Mr. Holsinger had stated at 30. It's 50,000 total, 20,000 for the fire department and 30,000 for the rest of the city. Because they, their big red trucks are handled different. Our mechanic can't handle those. Any questions?
Comments or questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Other staff comments tonight? City attorney?
Very brief comment to update the board on the annexation challenge lawsuit. I filed an answer to that lawsuit Monday, I think it was the 13th. Along with that, I filed under the rules of civil procedure, some discovery documents, request for admissions, request for production, interrogatories. Those are due back to me 30 days from the date they receive them. You've got to add six days to that because I know we're in a modern, technical age, but they haven't changed the rules of civil procedure yet. So, you still have to add three days for mailing them over. And they require that you mail a copy regardless of whether you send them email or not. And then you have to add three days for the mail coming back. You have to add that even though they send them back email until that rule has changed. So, sometime around the end of July, I should get back the answers. They can answer them early. They don't have to wait 30 days. But my experience of those has been people always wait the 30th to the 30th day, mail them on the 31st and add the three days. So, sometime in July, we should get back the answers and the, to the request for production and interrogatories and request for admissions. And after I review those, then I'll decide what, if I need to file some motions based on that. Just wanted to bring, bring you up to date as to what's happening on that suit.
Thank you. Commissioners, communications, Commissioner Bissell?
Come in.
Commissioner Carroll?
No, ma'am. First one, Johnson.
Mr. LeVorn, could you, do you have any knowledge to the letter that Mr. Powers was speaking of that he received? And when it would have been sent?
I'd have to check into it.
Mr. Powers, do you know when you received that letter?
This, this chicken was about over a year ago. And actually, what happened was my neighbor had some giddies. It wasn't my giddies. They were never on my property. I got cited for the giddies and when I refused to take, they claimed the giddies. I thought they weren't mine. Couldn't do anything with them. And the next thing, I was cited for my file that was on, on the property. These are the gray stained chickens that one night before, one lady that owns the property, she got the little miniature goats. She had, she had a little tiny goats. And she had a kid that used the goat. Asked about the chickens and they told, the goats, they went over the chickens and the chickens. So, we've been going all this time. Then all of a sudden, it's like, you can't have them. And, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. I won't call anybody out, but I don't think that that's a very...
You do some checking for me?
Yes, ma'am.
On that, when those were, when those were sent. Because I'd like to know about if he had notarized stuff from previous property owners, if they were there, how we told him he couldn't have them.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, mayor.
I don't have anything. Motion for adjournment?
Some move?
All in favor?
Aye.